Podcast by Milford TV. There are members of the media, the Milford Daily News and the town crier in attendance. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any school committee member know at the end of the meeting. Thank you very much. First agenda item is approval of the minutes. There are no minutes to approve tonight. We're going to approve them at the next school committee meeting. So, next agenda item is announcements, correspondence and distributions. Does anybody have any announcements, correspondence? I do. I just attended the, with Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Tremly, the Memorial School Books and Beyond program where we get to give awards away to the second graders, first graders and kindergartners. Due to a time constriction, Dr. McIntyre and I weren't able to do the kindergartners. So, but it's just a great event. Everybody's excited. The turnout, the auditorium was jammed. It really is. It was a great, great event. So, any other member? No? Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here? Invitation to speak? Moving on. Next agenda item is the Milford High School Liaison to the School Committee. How are you, young man?
Good, thank you.
And your name?
Timmercity. And I'm the vice president of the class of 2016.
Very nice, very nice. Go ahead and let us know what's going on at the high school.
Okay. I'd like to speak on a couple of things, just more senior oriented things, I think, since we're starting to come to the end. Senior prom is coming up on May 27th at the Omni Parker House in Boston. And we've been selling tickets for that. And the after prom committee has had multiple fundraisers and are still looking for donations. We're not technically affiliated with them, but we've also been planning our senior field day, which we've sort of reimagined to double as a carnival with a dunking cotton candy machines and some other fun activities to go alongside the traditional games. It's teacher appreciation week, so members of student leadership have been providing coffee and breakfast in the mornings for all faculty. And we put together a presentation of messages to each teacher from students, thanking them for all they do to make this school the really good place that it is. And seniors have all received our decisions from colleges. And last Sunday, May 1st, was the deadline to send in deposits for most of them. Students will be attending a wide variety of colleges all across the country, to name a few. Assumption, BCBU, Clark, Emerson, Harvard, Northeastern, Temple, University of New Hampshire and UMass Amherst.
Very nice.
That's about it.
Very nice.
Very nice. Any member?
Jim?
I just want to say thank you, Timmy, for coming in.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Excellent job articulating it. And can you tell us a little bit about where you're going?
UMass Amherst, my son.
Excellent. Any majors on tap that you?
English, right now.
Do you think you might come back as an educator?
Possibly. I'm not sure.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
That was my question.
That's all I wanted to know. Anytime a senior's in front of us, where are you going?
Tim, thanks for coming tonight. I'm glad you commented on the, I meant to do the announcements about teacher appreciation week. I want to acknowledge first, to thank all of our educators. This is National Teacher Appreciation Week and there's been a number of recognition events happening in all the schools. I know it's the number of educators in the audience tonight, so I want to thank you for the work that you do. But also, the work that the seniors, as I understand it, this week, was it a week long where all the seniors or was it all the students at the high school did something for the teachers? Tell us a little bit about that.
Everyone in student leadership came in the mornings and brought donuts or coffee or bagels, that kind of thing, and set up breakfast for the teachers every morning starting at seven. And we also cleaned all the desks in the classrooms after school and left a message on the board like thanking the teacher.
I think it's just terrific. It just speaks to just the quality culture we have among our students here for you guys. And I found that out today. I thought maybe a parent teacher organization had put something together, but when I found out it was the students that did it themselves, it was just really impressive to me for, so thanks. Job well done.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next agenda item is the Milford Community School Use Program Board of Directors reappointment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, this item, we do this each year, just to give you some background. The Milford School Committee appoints three individuals to the Milford Community School Use Program Board of Directors. The current term for Mr. Ronald Creashia will expire this month. And Mr. Creashia has indicated he wishes to be reappointed to the Board of Directors for another three-year term. In some previous years, he'd come up about what that process is and how do people know that this is even a possibility for them. The Board of Directors position is posted in the selectmen's office each year, and in this case, it's also posted on the Milford Community School Use Program Office. Openings are listed in the Milford Annual Report as well. Any interested citizen needs to only send a letter of interest in being appointed to the Board or the committee. At this time, besides Mr. Creashia, no other citizen showed an interest in being appointed to the Board. So I'd ask for the committee this evening to take a vote to appoint Mr. Ronald Creashia to the Milford Community School Use Program Board of Directors.
Motion from John, second from Scott. All in favor? unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next agenda item is the School Improvement Plan and Family Handbook for the Woodland Elementary School. Mr. Consigli.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Craig, it's so nice to see you at these meetings now.
Thanks.
Nice to see everyone. I'm sorry, which one was first?
First one is going to be improvement.
School Improvement Plan? All right. Well, first, I'd like to recognize my school council. We have a, we have a pretty large council. Sitting to my right is the co-chairperson, Chris Wilson. He's the parent of Kaylee Wilson in our school. Also Patty Kelly's in the back over there. She's one of our teacher representatives, but also teacher representatives Tara Daverin, Net LaFave, Adam Manning, Kathy Peliquin, Carol Sullivan, Zversky and Eric Ventura. Parent representatives, Michael Anantonio, Giuseppe DiGiallino, Robert Lewis, Osi Momoto, Paul Pellegrini, Carolyn Periello, Consigli, and then Community Representative Leah Valenti. I'd like to just recognize all of those people who are on our school council. I'd also like to recognize Lisa Kincaid and Julie Parsons, just for the work that they do every day in the front office. They're the best. And I don't know what else to say about it, but they're awesome. And curriculum coordinator Kelly True and curriculum leaders Shannon Roach, Jared Anzalone, Jess Lamarr, Stephanie Matthews, they keep us all pointed in the same direction. I think that their leadership is crucial at our building level, so thanks to them. And of course, all the teachers at Woodland, they're amazing. The work that they do every day, the, just the spirit of the building is incredible. It's a great place to be, a great place to work, so I thank them. I try to thank them as much as I can, probably not as much as I should, but as much as I can.
Where do they get in the new school?
Where do they get in the new school? So, obviously, that's school improvement number one. We walk across the parking lot, really, into the new building. And a lot of this year, we've spent kind of preparing for that. And a lot of next year, I think obviously is going to, we're going to be transitioning into that new space. But I am going to echo a lot of what we, what Lisa Burns and Lisa Furth talked about last week, because we did work cohesively this year, which was, it was an improvement that we made administratively on the K five level. And really trying to bring into focus what's written versus what's taught and what's learned in those three lenses and make sure that they're all unified into one. So, the three big things that we're working on next year, and we started a little bit this year, but especially next year, will be curriculum mapping and making sure that we have all of our curriculum maps aligned and written down and useful, not just a document that's on a shelf that nobody can use. We're going to stress the workshop model again, make sure that, you know, we could have the best curriculum in the world, but if we aren't teaching the way that we're supposed to be teaching, then what does it matter? So, really focusing on the workshop model. And then our PLC work, and PLCs being professional learning communities, teachers sitting together talking about data, talking about student work, sharing written documents to make sure that, you know, what I think is a four or five is the same as what you think a four or five is. If my students aren't getting it and your students are getting it, what did you do differently? Those kinds of things. So, those are the kinds of conversations we want to make sure are happening. And I think next year, one of the big changes that we're doing at Woodland for our students is we're, we're thinking about the transition that all of our students are making from the second grade to the third grade, but from third, fourth, fifth and on to middle school and so on and so forth. So, when the students in second grade come to Woodland next year, they'll have a similar model. They'll have the one teacher for the majority of the day unless they need intervention or they have special services, then maybe those teachers, those kids will have another teacher for those. But then the fourth grade will be partnering. So, in fourth grade, students will have two teachers. One of the teachers will teach the math and probably science, social studies, and the other teacher's going to be teaching reading, writing and intervention, or, you know, something similar to that, but basically flipping classes. And then when they get to fifth, the students will have the five different subjects and the five different teachers. So, we've kind of created a seamless transition for a student that, to me anyways, until teachers makes sense, where in third grade, they have the one, the fourth grade, they have the two, and then they gradually work their way to the five teachers in fifth grade. And then when they go over to Stacy, they've already been in the model of the five teachers at Woodland, so then that'll be familiar for them, too. Some of the other things that we're, we're working on include instructional rounds where we, we have to work with our teachers on this to make sure that they feel that it's comfortable, it's a non-evaluative process, but they're going into other classrooms and seeing best practices in action and being able to use those best practices in their own. And then finally, creating a, somehow replicating what we're doing at Woodland now with culture and climate and making sure that it's not lost in this, this building of the three different floors and making sure that we're bringing fifth grade teachers to, with fourth grade teachers and third grade teachers get to see fifth grade teachers and just making everyone feel like we're all in this together. It's quite a task, I think, and I think we just have to think, just keep that in mind as, as we're developing meetings and times for people to get together that we're doing it vertically as well as horizontally. So, that's the gist of our school improvement plan this year. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Any member?
Sure. Well, first of all, you have a great plan.
Thank you.
Having been part of your school council a few years back, I was always struck by the involvement of the staff, the parent community, your community member. People work really, really well together under your leadership there. And I think bringing the fifth grade, if there's ever a school that's going to be welcoming to a new grade level and new group of teachers and the type of climate you already have there, I think it's the perfect place. It's not going to be easy, but I think that the stage has already been set for that. So I think you're, you're in a really good place. I think one of the things that I would love to have a little more feedback on, if it's already set in stone, the model about how fourth grade is going to look next year. That's kind of an interesting model to switch, to have one person do all of the English Language Arts. And normally, you might see fourth grade, and I definitely understand this, switching for science and social studies. And at the elementary level, and you already know this, you know, you really see teachers owning their kids and literacy is kind of the heart of everything.
Right.
So, I was just curious if there was a reason why you decided to divide it up that way?
We, it's a good question, and I, we've, we have some models going now. One of the models, for example, has, is split with EL, EL students. So, two of the rooms, half of the students are EL, and then for, for Language Arts and Social Studies, they've been doing some switching. And then math and the ELD class, English Language Development, they've been doing the switching. And it works because we're using the MCU's, too. So, we have the model curriculum units from the state that we've been rolling out, and I think you're right that, in some ways, they're finding it, a lot of teachers anyways, are finding that, that it can become some, the Language Arts piece. But, I don't know, they've all, they've managed it. In another situation, we have the language, the literacy going and what there's, one teacher's doing the literacy, one teacher's doing the math, but the intervention, they're both doing their own intervention block. So, what makes it work well is that the teachers are in constant communication. So, I guess the tier one instructions happen in the classroom, but because they're communicating, because they're, they're talking about student work, they're still, I guess, doing tier two and tier three work on their own. So, to say, I guess, that one teacher's doing literacy, yes, but both of them are sharing in the full responsibility of literacy.
Right. And I think if that's, you know, definitely understanding that, and I know how the model now is you have smaller classrooms and shared teaching space, that I think it will be interesting to see what, what are the findings at the end of a year in terms of what did that look like?
Right.
Were teachers really, were parents able to really get the information they needed at the end of the day?
Right.
And were they able to run the interventions so they feel like they knew their children enough, their students enough through ELA?
Right.
Through their reading and their writing to be able to run effective interventions. And I think that communication with parents and as a parent, who will you communicate with? Will you communicate with your ELA teacher?
Right.
Will you communicate with your math teacher? I think it will, a lot of it, the success of it will depend on communication.
I agree.
And then obviously, your data at the end of the year to see what that really looked like and felt like.
Yep.
I mean, I think it's interesting to try different models.
And I, you know, I think this year, we kind of offered it out as a pilot. When we offered it out, we were into, I think it was October and November, so schedules were already set.
Yeah.
And I know that we would have had more teachers that want, well, I know we did, that wanted to do it, it just, we couldn't make the schedule work after.
Right.
So, in the models that we had going, for some reason, it worked. I don't know.
Yeah. The only other thing that I would just want to think about is, I would never want to see an elementary teacher isolating themselves from one of the main curriculum areas, so if there's professional development offered, even if someone isn't teaching math next year, it will probably still be really important that those teachers attend that PD and vice versa.
Good point.
So, everyone is still staying really skilled with the new research and whatever methodology we're using. So, if you were to change the model, then people are kind of feeling like, oh, I don't do math.
No, that's a good point. In fact, this year, we had everyday math training. We did it five times this year and everybody attended it.
Yeah.
So, it is.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I think just to keep people, like you said, they, I need to know what's going on over here.
Right.
I'm still working with the students, so.
Right. Yeah.
But, you know, maybe next year, this model's not working and we got to go back.
Right, maybe, whatever it is.
Right.
As long as everyone is still flexible and still is continuing to develop his professional area.
And that's, that's a good point, too, because I think that speaks to the Woodland culture, that there is a lot of flexibility and people are willing to work together and, you know, there was some, there were groups of third grade teachers that wanted to do this next year. We do have one group doing it, piling it this year, but wanted to do it next year. I just, I think it's too much.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know.
Yeah.
But flexibility is key, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Scott?
So, thank you, Craig. As a, you know, one of the things that I've appreciated over the last four years of having an opportunity to listen to your school improvement plans and where you've gone with this, the culture that you've created at Woodland is phenomenal. And I think it's, one of the things that I'll be interested to see is how you kind of take that and take it across the district in your new position. What are some of the things that you would sort of pinpoint in just kind of thinking about as this, as the, as the fifth grade transitions in? We're kind of keeping that middle school model, it sounds like?
Mm-hmm.
Where it's the, the single grade teachers with going through. Is it, I guess my question on that is, is it because it's, that's the way it's, that's the way it's been done for a long time? Is it to help with the transition from fifth grade into sixth grade? Is it because that's how the teachers have been set up from a certification standpoint? Can you just kind of talk us through a little bit of?
I think it's all of those.
Okay.
For this year. And, you know, who knows moving forward?
Right.
You know, with the model, the fourth grade model, maybe that's not working, we go back. Maybe we're finding that, you know, I don't know, we need more time to devote to math, for example, because, you know, in fifth grade, they have forty-five minutes of math.
Mm-hmm.
And that, to me, is not a lot of time. And I think that somehow, we need to get more minutes in the schedule so that students can have more math time. In the way that it's presently set up, I don't know how to do that.
Right.
So, maybe that's something that we have to think about down the road and how do we, how do we shake that up?
Okay.
It may look a little different. But.
All right. And I, actually, one question for Chris Wilson. So, Chris, as a parent of a student that's at Woodland, obviously, this is, that walk across the parking lot's a pretty big, what ultimately looks like a short distance is a very large walk.
Exactly.
Is there anything in particular that you would pinpoint as a parent that you would say, hey, here's what I, here's, here's a couple of things that I'm really excited about with the new, with this transition. Here's some things that, eh, I'm not sure how this is going to go. Kind of thinking about it from a school council, it's from a parent perspective?
Sure. I think from the parent's perspective, it's going to be working with the kids and just my own child saying, all right, it's a new school. You know, they're not familiar with the school. So, where's, where's, you know, where's my classroom? Where's the, where the office is? Where's the cafeteria? So, just reporting, you know, where to go on day one and then getting familiar with the school. So, I think they'll, they'll know the staff from third and fourth grade, but obviously, the fifth grade staff will be new, too. So, that's, from my daughter's standpoint, going from fourth to fifth grade, that'll be another transition. So, new school environment, new teachers, but some, a lot of familiar faces, which will be helpful. So, I think from, from that side, you know, just talking with my own child to assure her that, you know, it's going to be this great new school, a lot of familiar faces to help you get through the front door and the rest are, are great staff that your brothers had in, you know, in the fifth grade. So, looking forward to that.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other member? Joe?
So, it's a very impressive and ambitious plan. Your replacement's going to be a busy guy next year. There are a couple of things that really stood out to me. One of the things that impressed me the most was that team approach that you made reference to, and you see that throughout the entire plan. The use of data to inform a lot of the decisions, I thought stood out. And you have a very clear plan to address a lot of the initiatives and a lot of things that we've been talking about here as a committee, whether it's the technology improvements that we're making next year, and you have a number of references to that, integrating the Chromebooks, the X two enhancements. From a school choice perspective, we've been talking a lot about, or the feedback that we've gotten from parents, the lack of enrichment programs, and that's something you're targeting as part of this plan as well. And then the focus on culture and climate, which can be so important for a school of that size, and you're clearly addressing that as well. And then you touched on the professional development and the collaboration among the staff. I know there were a couple of references to teams that you had created, the math team and the ELA team. So, it's, it's really exciting, to Scott's point, to see how you can take this approach that you've had at Woodland and use that across the entire district going forward. So, we expect a lot from you.
I'm ready.
I know you are.
We'll let you know how you, how we feel.
Any other member? Can I motion to accept the Woodland's Improvement Plan? Scott, second by Joe, all in favor? unanimous. All right, Craig. Now, on to your family handbook.
All right. Okay, so the family handbook is a, is a work in progress. I think there's a lot of protocols in here that we just don't know yet, as far as pickup and drop off and buses and walkers, all those, anything you could think of that's going to involve the new school, we just can't possibly forecast it right now and put it in here. As far as rules, you know, safe, responsible, respectful, that's what we expect every day and those kinds of rules haven't changed. It's just that, you know, the protocols, the names, I mean, as far as the names in the front, even those are a little different. So, it's, it's a work in progress, so I don't know how to, how you guys, how we can do this. I don't know if we can approve it or not.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to, I was just going to ask, is it something where do we, can we, do we have the ability, can we table this until either approve as is, understand the need for modification and changes and revisit this in September once the new school year starts?
We can. I would just ask the committee to take it as, as two items, as two votes. I would still vote the draft tonight because we, and we'll submit, we have to submit by June 30th to the DESE.
Right.
And we can submit a work in progress, but we have to vote something. So, even if you come back and revisit it, say in July, then Melissa can update that. Melissa could just send the, the new updated version. So, if you just take what's been redlined, you know what the name changes now that you know.
Yep.
Some of the changes of, understanding that the procedural stuff has to still be modified, it's not a big deal. But if you just take it as a vote tonight, even if it's a vote, understanding we'll be coming back for another vote again and when you're ready.
But we need to, we need to probably vote on it before we send it out to families, correct?
Yeah, you're only, you can distinguish it if you want to vote on it tonight, just for the record, just to vote it for submission to the Department of Advanced Secondary Education to meet that June 30th obligation. And then, you know, conditionally, say conditionally approved, come back to our school committee before distribution to families, however you want.
Okay. Well, do we have the ability to give him, if we have to have it until June, not till June 30th, can we wait until the?
You can, unless it'll be ready.
I don't think, no.
A lot of it won't be adjusted to the.
Okay.
So, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, that we, that we accept this as a draft process for the purposes of submitting to, to the DESE with the intent of revisiting after school opens after September 1st.
Second? Jimmy? All in favor? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Now, I just want to know if I'm going to show up to central office next year and you're going to be dressed like Davy Crockett or, you know, any of that kind of stuff, you know?
Depends on what's happening.
Kevin Watson, always going to have to go out and get some uniforms, too, you know? Thank you very much. Thanks for all you did.
Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item, middle school reuse.
Yes, so I have a very.
Reuse, I should say, I'm sorry.
So, we did meet last night. Tonight will be a very brief update. I would ask that for, and actually, under future agenda items, I would ask that we have a, a longer spot, spot on the agenda. We did have our, we did have a meeting last night, what I ultimately believe, and Bob was there as well, may possibly be our final meeting, was last night.
Okay.
We did put some, put forward some final revisions to what will be submitted and presented to the Board of Selectmen. That's Rick Volani, our town administrator, is putting those, those adjustments in. He'll be then sending out the final draft to us. It's already been voted and accepted in its current form. He's just typing it up. That will be sent back in to us and we'll be able to provide copies to this entire board and be able to provide a very robust update at that point. It will actually be presented to the Board of Selectmen in this coming Monday's meeting as well, so I certainly invite all members of this committee, as well as the public in general, to certainly either attend or watch through Milford Tele, through Milford Television. But we'll be in a position to present, present the full report to the, to this full board But we'll be in a position to present, present the full report to the, to this full board at our next meeting, and would just ask that we probably have a, a longer spot on the agenda for that, it will probably, it would probably take, I would expect, probably somewhere in, in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty minutes.
Okay, so you wanna do it at the next meeting?
If we could do it at the next meeting, that would be ideally, yes.
All right, we'll take you.
Absolutely. Just looking to make sure we get that on the agenda, the, the very short overview is, is we'll be presenting multiple options, one will include town municipal use, one will include sale of building, and there's a lot more to it, I would tell you, there's actually two parts, there's sort of an executive summary that's about fourteen pages long, most executive summaries are one, so it just gives you the idea of the detail. The Cecil Group, who's the outside contractor, who was hired by this committee to put together a report, also has their full findings and their reports, I wanna say that report is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty to two hundred pages long, it's very, very detailed and very in-depth, I will not be going through two hundred pages at the next meeting, I promise, but I will go through the executive summary.
Will you be able to? Will you be able to get it to us prior to the next meeting?
Yeah, as soon as we, I've asked for, and Bob, if you can work with Steve on that, just make sure that we get, we've asked Steve Tredle, who's the chairman of the Middle School Reuse Committee, to get virtual copies.
Okay.
As well as, of both of those reports, so that way we're able to dig into those.
Thank you.
And I'm, so as soon as we get those final copies, we'll get into that.
Okay, and we'll get you on the next, next meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item is a report to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
Great, thanks, Mr. Chairman, the first agenda item is the Director of Special Education Search Process, and we've posted that position, that posting is closed, our goal is to have a candidate for the committee to interview on June second, I believe we're looking at having an abbreviated meeting prior to senior night, so it might be on, on a little bit of a different timetable.
Okay, are you looking to have any committee member, any kind of committee?
I, I don't, I don't think so initially, that was what we were, we were going to do, but I think we're gonna be able to do it on the second, probably in about a half an hour.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Next agenda item is the Woodland Elementary Principal Appointment, and I'd like to introduce everyone, I'm excited that, Mr. Tim, Timothy Kieran is here today, and Tim, if you can come up to the, the microphone.
Sure. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
I think instead of stealing, instead of stealing Tim's thunder, I'm gonna let Tim talk a little bit about himself, and then maybe the committee could ask some questions or.
Sure, absolutely.
Sure, so I'm, I'm a born and raised Milfordian, and currently live in Milford, I think I lost the ability to call myself a lifelong Milfordian, my, my wife and I lived in Framingham for seven years, when we first got married, I think I lost my.
Ooh.
You ruined it.
So, but, but we're back in town and loving it, so I went to Stonehill College for undergrad, and then started my career in Mendon Upton for four years, and then headed over to Hockington first as a Technology Integration Specialist for a couple of years, and I, I, I was on that track for administration early in my career, but I really missed my classroom, missed having kids, so I went back to the second grade classroom for a number of years. Four years ago, I made the move to administration, I was ready personally and professionally, so I was an assistant principal for two years in Hockington, and I spent the last two years as the principal at the Hopkins School in Hockington. I love Hockington, I love what I do there, I love my job, but when this opportunity presented itself, it felt, it felt really good, and it felt really right for me to look into this, and knowing that I would be doing the important work that I do for my hometown, my community, my friends, my neighbors, my own family, felt really important. So, I pursued it, and here I am, so I thank you all for the, the opportunity and the privilege to, to be the next principal of the Woodland School and, and taking over for Craig, he's got enormous shoes to fill, or I have enormous shoes to fill.
He does too.
Yes.
Don't hurt yourself, pat yourself on the back.
Never miss an opportunity.
Do you have a Davy Crockett outfit?
I don't have a Davy Crockett outfit.
You might wanna get one.
Yeah, I think we might wear the same size, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm so excited, I'm just over the moon excited about this opportunity, you know, I've had the chance to, to get into the new building, it's, it's really awe inspiring, it's, it's amazing what the town of Milford is doing, and then, just my opportunity to tour the district last week and to see Woodland School and see Stacey School, get into classrooms, see kids, see the teachers. I shared with my wife when I got home, you know, I'm, I feel, I feel good about how today went, but if it doesn't work out, as an educator and a parent, I was really excited about what I was seeing there, it was just so impressive, to see what's happening in, in the, in the Stacey School and at, at Woodland, just the kids and their engagement with the learning that's happening, the focus on, on students, just the, the calm, orderly way that just the building was functioning, the culture was, was amazing. And I know that's because of, you know, what, what Craig has done, what the teachers have done, what Nancy has done over at, at Stacey as well, it's just really positive things happening in, in the Milford schools, that's, was just so exciting for me. When I was doing my homework and looking into the, the position, looking at the school improvement plan, looking at the strategic plan, just really great things happening, you know, just taking my job applicant, you know, shoot, you know, lens away from this, as a, as an educator and a parent, it was just really impressive, so, I, I couldn't be more thrilled to, to be joining this team, so.
All right, any member? Scott?
So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things that I, I, I thought about when I, when I came in this evening and, and saw you, saw you sitting there was, it's always good to see a, a Milford guy coming back and working in the town, that's the first thing.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The second thing was, it speaks volumes that your, your, that your wife came with you.
Thank you.
Tells you it's a family thing, you can't do this job alone, you know that.
No, yes.
So, it's wonderful to see that the two of you guys came here this evening, that, that speaks volumes to me, as a parent, as a, as a, as a committee member, and as somebody who also grew up in this town, so, that's huge.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, it was important for us, we, we had a lot of conversations about this, about this decision, making sure that it was right for our family, and right for our kids, who will be going throughout the schools, and, you know, and, and knowing how huge a job this is going to be this summer and this next year, you know, as, as, you know, when I got the offer from, from Kevin, and I told my wife, she said, well, I guess I'll see you in two thousand eighteen, and, and, you know, it, it's a, it's really a family decision, so, thank you.
Congratulations, and certainly look forward to, look forward to, to seeing the great things in the direction that you take, you know, that you take the school to, as you mentioned earlier, you do have big shoes to fill. I won't, I won't inflate him too much, 'cause we gotta live with him for the next couple of years, so, but certainly wish you nothing but the best, and I'm very excited to have you join in that school, you've, you've got a big undertaking at that, but, you're in a good place, so welcome.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I had the pleasure of meeting Tim, what was about a week ago, with a couple of the other members, we sat here for the, I guess you'd call it the meet and greet, or quasi-interview, and just your, your accomplishments over your professional life, your enthusiasm, what appears to be sincere dedication, I just welcome you aboard, and I, you know, I think the district is, is gonna receive the benefit of having you here, so.
Thank you, John.
Congratulations and welcome.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, Scott and I had a conversation earlier outside the, the meeting, and we were talking about how glad we were that you accepted the position, and you talk about the culture within the district, but it's also the culture within the community.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I've only been here thirty years, so I'm a newcomer.
Yeah.
But you look around the table, how many of the school committee members are born and brought up, and are still here in Milford giving back to the community, and it's just very comforting, you know, whenever we have the opportunity to, A, move, advance somebody from the community, or someone like yourself, that gives us the opportunity to, to bring you back, because you understand the culture, you've lived the culture, you grew up in the culture, and I think those are the real pluses that you're gonna bring to the table. Your whole background is great, but having been at, you know, in Milford, you're living in Milford, you understand the culture of the community, it's gonna be huge, huge, so, congratulations and welcome.
I appreciate that, you know, when, when my wife and I first met, and I was introducing her to friends and family, you know, one of the things she said was, you guys never leave.
Yeah.
Nope, no.
Well, that's a true story, I mean, when I first, first came, I was just amazed at, you know, as my children were growing, the parents that were born and brought up and stayed in the town, it was just, you know, it was amazing, but I think one of the selling points too, I was at seven o'clock mass last night, and your Aunt Mary was there and grabbed me, you know, and so, she put a plug in for you too, but I, he's all that. I said, ask somebody else, but again, thank you very much, congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome, anything any of us can do, please reach out to us.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Doctor?
Great, and next on the agenda is the Director of Information Technology, Digital Learning Innovation, this is Dr. Matthew Joseph.
Good evening.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, good.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you again. Nice to meet you again, thank you very much for having me tonight.
Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you, welcome.
It's been quite the rapid pace as we move, as, sitting here eight days ago and meeting some of you, we've seen a lot of each other the last couple of days, and we met, I came in today with a, a change of clothes, because I just came up from the hate of doing the presentation down there today for the Massachusetts Elementary School Principal Association, I come in, first time I met Kathy, I'm carrying extra clothes, and I changed some wear, I'm soaking wet, so I'm excited to be here, and look forward to getting started.
Great, so we're gonna follow a similar process, Matt, if you wanna just kinda give the committee a little bit of background and history, and then we'll throw it around for comments and questions.
Sure, so my name is Matt Joseph, I'm from Berkshire County originally, and went to Pittsfield High School and then Springfield College, and graduated there from, with elementary education major, and was a third and fifth grade teacher for eleven years in Berkshire County in Pittsfield Mass, and from there, I went and got my master's degree in special education and my administrator's degree from North Adam State, and at that point, it's probably like thirteen years ago, we were, we decided to partner with some local businesses and the colleges to launch the Berkshire Wireless Learning Initiative. So, for three years, we launched a one-to-one laptop initiative in all of our middle schools, so I was the point person for that, I had a great opportunity to work actually with some stakeholders in Maine, because at that time, that's when they rolled out the Maine, really, the one-to-one initiative throughout the state, and I had a chance to work with Governor King at that point, and then had a chance to work with Apple for three years in Berkshire County to do that work within the middle school, and that was really, I really got to see the engagement of students utilizing some of the tools that were really up and coming in the twenty-first century learning piece. After three years of that, I wanted to, I saw the effect of working as a building leader in two different buildings, and I wanted to have the same opportunity for myself to bring some of those tools and strategies that I saw as an integration specialist into a school building, and that's where I accepted the position in Attleboro, and I was a principal at Hill Roberts Elementary School in Attleboro for five years, and then the last five years was the elementary principal in Natick, and just completed my educational doctorate at BC, really looking at student engagement and job satisfaction through building culture. And this was, what really struck me eight days ago, and I'm sitting in this room and having, having conversations with some people, administrators and school committee and parents, it was a conversation, and it was talking about learning, because at the end of the day, whatever the title says on, on the newspaper, whatever you read, it's about learning, and what excited me about this job, when Dr. McIntyre and I were talking about it, is the conversations we had in this room, it wasn't an interview, it was talking about students, it was talking about students here in, in Milford, and how we can combine the learning tools that are really coming up and coming into the town with the teachers, because technologies, they don't teach. What was powerful for me on my visit was seeing the teachers, because at the end of the day, those are the experts, and when you combine the teachers that I had a chance to meet, and, and going to meet some more tomorrow, with the current technologies, the student learning's gonna increase, and when we had the conversations about some of the opportunities, that's what sparked my interest, as well as, as looking at those opportunities and having a chance to work with some of the teachers that I did have a chance to meet, and then teachers pre-K through twelve, it was really exciting, and I don't know how many people, hockey fans, yes, some, so one of the things that I always remember, and when Wayne Gretzky Hall of Fame speech says, you know, what made you great, and he said, you know, great players skate to where the puck is, I skate to where the puck's going to be, and what really interested me about this opportunity is, this is where education's going to be, and I wanna be a part of the team that helps Milford get there first. And having that chance to work with teachers, with central office team, and students as well, and having a chance to work in both capacities was something that I said I wanna be a part of, and that's why I'm sitting here today.
We're glad you're sitting there.
Yeah.
Scott?
So, I'm glad you think the process went very quickly, that's fantastic, it's been, I'm very excited to have you coming on board, this is, this has been a long road, from a committee member's perspective, to get to this point and find the right person, and, and making sure that we get this position in place, and, and finding you and having you come to the district, so, I'm glad that it went, I, I'm glad that it went the way that it went, I know it was an exhaustive search, there were a lot of applicants, so I'm very excited to see, I'm very excited to see, you know, if you're gonna be skating to where the puck is, I'm excited to see where you land.
Right, and it's not just me, it's a we, and, and that's part of that, okay, it's not a lone skater.
I got that. Yep.
That'd be figure skating, that would look real bad, no costumes, I heard costumes, and these things, can't do that.
It's the collective view, so, I'm excited to see where you bring the district, welcome.
Thank you.
And you're, you're coming in at a very exciting time, we're having a lot of changes, a lot of new leaders that are coming in, saying goodbye to some, some, some leaders that are moving on to their next opportunities, so, it's a time of tremendous change, and also tremendous opportunity, so, welcome and congratulations.
Any other member?
I, I just wanna say congratulations too, this, this position that we have here is something that's been on everyone's radar in town, and, and I'm glad we finally got someone that can take the reins and, and run with it, and looking, and listening to what you've said, I think you're gonna do fabulous in this position, I think, I don't think we're gonna have much to worry now that you're taking this and running with it, and I feel really comfortable, glad that this is kind of over, that we've done looking for it, but I'm more excited to find out where it's actually gonna go, so, again, congratulations.
Good, and, and part of that is the transparency in the role, and I'd be excited to continue to come back, as much as we wanna have that communication coming into the schools, and creating avenues so that you will be seeing it, and you'll be seeing it in multiple methods, and being a part of that process, because when that's, when that's out there, that's how we continue to improve and grow as a community, because the community voice is critical as we move forward, and feedback as well.
Sure, Joe?
Just welcome you to the team as well, and as everyone else pointed out, this is a very exciting time for, for our schools, and this year, we're gonna be making a substantial investment in, in technology, I'm sure they, they filled you in as part of the interview process, we're gonna be.
No.
We're gonna be investing nearly a million dollars in infrastructure improvement, so that's gonna give you the, the foundation to start to work off of, and, and what we need at, at this point is that visionary, that person to come in and say, this is how we're gonna enhance the educational experience for our students, this is how we're gonna integrate technology into the, the classroom, and so to your point, communication's gonna be critical, you know, you need to make sure you let Kevin and, and, and us know everything that you need in order for you to be successful, 'cause we know it's, it's gonna be a difficult climb, just based on what we've seen over the past few years, and we wanna make sure that you feel supported.
Great, well, thank you.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, again, welcome aboard, congratulations, again, I had the pleasure of meeting you last week with some of the other members, I, I wanna emphasize, I guess, that this is a new position, this is a new role, even though the beginning of the job description or job title says Director of Information Technology, and then there's the rest in digital learning, and in hearing your background and, and your views, I think you're gonna, I mean, this is a new role, it's one for you to define in Milford Public School Systems, and it's one for you to thrive in, I look, I look really forward to it, it's something that we really haven't had before, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to your vision and seeing how you execute this role. You know, one thing that you said to me, and you said many things, but technology increases engagement with the learning, and, and you emphasized the learning when we last spoke, so, again, I'm just excited for this opportunity for the, for the entire district.
Great, and I look forward to having the opportunity to show you those processes, because I think engagement is hard to measure, and I know, and we're in the business of often measuring students and achievement, so, having that opportunity to show what that engagement looks like, and then the retention of those skills for teachers, and I know, Joe, you had talked about some of the infrastructures and pieces, but another piece that's gonna be critical in all of that is the teacher training, and when the teachers have the training combined with the tools, that leads the drive to put this into place, because sometimes the technology has to be defined, and stress happens when people aren't aware of what's coming, and that training for the teachers is gonna be very critical, and I want to be a part of that, and at heart, I'm, I'm a teacher and an educator, and I wanna be a part of that and look forward, combining the vision piece with that training, and that's how it's gonna, not just take off, it's gonna take seed and have legs and longevity within the district.
Okay.
You know, when we met you last week, we were looking at you through a different lens, and we were thinking about a principalship, and that's what you are today, and I really wanna commend Craig and Kevin, and, I don't know, Bob, were you, you were probably part of that too, but.
No. For me, from the outside looking in.
From really looking at things in a different way, and when I sat and listened to you speak last week, I thought this is a person who really is probably ready for central office and ready for that kind of more broad role within a school district, and it never once occurred to me that maybe you would be the, that match for this position, I don't know why I didn't think that, because smarter people than me thought that, and when I hear you talk about students, I think one of the most important parts of this position, kind of to John's point, is being available, being visible, and one thing I've noticed about central office in this district is their visibility, and you walk around a school with any of them, and you're talking with teachers, you're talking with students, our central office knows our schools, and I think so often, it's really easy for central office to get involved in their office and their own things, and I know Craig, you and I talked about how one of your goals is really to be out and about in schools, and I think that's the way we're gonna get teachers to buy in, and that's the way you're going to help bring us forward, and that feels to me like what you've been talking about, so, you know, I, I think you've made great choices, I think, Tim, your position at Woodland is, you're so well matched for that, and Matt, I think you really are gonna be a great asset to our district, so, I'm really looking forward to your work with us.
Great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Jim?
I just wanna say that I'm super excited to have you on board, and Mr. Marius and I participate in a marketing and communications subcommittee, and I'm looking forward to every opportunity to share the milestones that you're gonna create with the community, so, we will definitely be in touch with you.
Wonderful.
Once the ball gets rolling. So we will definitely be in touch with you once the ball gets rolling.
Wonderful. Look forward to it, I'm here tomorrow and ready to get started, so I'm really excited.
Great, glad to have you.
Yes. No, go ahead. I just wanted to make a comment to both of you, I didn't speak when you're up here, Tim, just to welcome you both, Matt and Tim, in being the guys who are on the outs, on his way to being the outsider looking in after having been in Milford for a number of years, eighteen in fact, and nine in this role. It's a very special community, and you know that from having grown up here, and your mom was an educator in the district and a great woman, had a chance to know her, and I wanna welcome you as well, both of you, to the team, and to echo Jen's comment, Kevin has a remarkable vision for, and he'll do very well, as will Craig, but his ability to really match up what even the person who's applied for a job or the posting, just to find the right people to carry the vision forward. We saw that, Kevin's proven that out with Sarah Boyle and a number of other hires, and now with you coming on and hearing how you're envisioning technology to move forward for the district, which has been a struggle for us for, really, for a good part of a decade or more. It's really never quite been right, honestly, in Milford, and I really think this is one of the more hopeful discussions we've had. This year, in fact, has been probably the most hopeful year I've seen in leadership around technology, and that's in large part because we've put people in certain positions because the person's the right fit, and the background's the right fit, even if they weren't applying for the title. So I wanna just, I haven't been part of that process, but to commend you for taking that step, put yourself in this role, and I think it will serve the town, I know it will serve the town well to do that, and just wanted to welcome you both. Chances are pretty good our paths will cross as I exit and as you enter, but it's a great community, it's a special town, it's one that I've come to call home over the last couple of decades, and welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Anything we can do?
All right, I'll remember that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
You're getting a million dollars, that's a good start.
Yeah, a star, right? Isn't that just a star?
Okay, next agenda item is reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two warrants for the committee's approval this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of $144,755.21.
Motion from Jim, second from Scott, all in favor.
And the second warrant, Mr. Chair, if you could, I'm not sure of my numbers, would you mind sharing the second warrant that you have in front of you? I think it's either $5,292.
Well, I don't have my glasses either, because Dr. McIntyre...
It should be right on the front page, Bob, right in the...
Oh, the $5,000?
Yes. All right, so it is. It's $5,292.17.
That's correct.
That it is. Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor. And yes.
And the committee also has a personnel update, no vote is required, it is a list of the appointments made from our previous meeting, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Moving on, the next agenda item is subcommittee updates, starting with policy.
You did such a great job last night. All right, next time I won't ask. Well, the policies subcommittee has a number of different policies that we are looking at right now, a little bit different from section B that we were looking at earlier. I think some of these policies are kind of all over the board in terms of topics and areas. So homework has been a topic that's been studied for the better part of the year, and right now, it looks like where we are with homework is being put in the hands of the curriculum teams and the buildings for them to consider what makes the most sense in terms of practice at each individual building. So I assume at some point that will come back to the policies subcommittee, but right now, that's in the individual building's hands. We met last week and spoke with Judy Dagnes, our Director of Nursing, and we are currently reviewing two different policies, the student wellness policy and medical awareness. Student wellness, it seems that mainly what Judy's doing is cleaning it up and making it more applicable to the new grade configuration that we will have, so things that might have said K to four will now say K to five, et cetera. So she was looking at some changes, and we'll bring that back for further review. Medical awareness, it seems like what we're doing is looking at some of the current practices and maybe better defining some of the roles and responsibilities, so I think she's hoping to provide more clear definition in terms of what a nurse is doing, what is the nurse leader doing, what a bus driver's doing, what is the role of a building principal. So Judy is working on that, and we'll bring that back for our review in the near future with some of the updates to that. We continue to look at the religious observance policy, or the idea of adding a religious observance policy to the Milford Public Schools, and currently, I believe each school council has discussed the topic of what would it look like to add this kind of a policy in practice. We currently have a draft policy that was put together, I think from some study of some different policies around the state, and some of the area local communities, and will be, I believe, putting that on the agenda for the next meeting. There's so many things, and a lot of the things that we're talking about right now are a little bit time sensitive, but that continues to be on the docket. We will also, at an upcoming meeting, be discussing foreign exchange field trips and talking a little bit about whether it's through policy or whether some practice in terms of what really makes sense for the best time for these trips to take place, and how to most effectively reintegrate students back into the schools, once they've been away and missed a number of days of class, how do we make it feel comfortable for them and efficient, both from the perspective of the teacher and of the students who are enjoying the trips. We're also looking at turf field, which I think we touched on in our last full school committee meeting, and that's back on the agenda for the next subcommittee policy meeting, talking about what makes sense in terms of use of the woodland field, especially with the addition of the new lights that will be out there, so we'll be figuring out what makes sense in terms of the policy for the field use. I think the last policy that we need to look at also is, goes along with some of our student athletes, and looking at our current policy in terms of grade point average, and where we are as a town compared to all of the other towns in the Hockmaw district, and we'll be taking a look at what our requirements are in terms of GPA for students, and see where we are in terms of alignment with some of the other districts, and we'll be here at Computer Boucher and hope to give us some guidance on that. So there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, and some of these feel like they need to kind of get wrapped up before the start of the next school year, and some I think we have a little more time to play with, but it's definitely a pretty busy subcommittee.
Yeah, and I think there's one more, the social, the responsible social media use, which I think we'll have final, a draft for the committee's review shortly as well. So yeah, to Jen's point, there's a lot going on with that committee, so get ready to roll up your sleeves, Mike.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thanks, Joe.
That's good.
Any discussion? No? Okay, next is the wellness, we have not met. Next is middle school east.
We were trying to meet actually this evening, unfortunately, we were unable to due to scheduling. We're working on scheduling dates, Kevin's working with Carrie to schedule, coordinate calendars and schedules between myself and the members, myself, Carrie, John.
Okay, thank you. Wooden School Building Committee?
We will be meeting the third Wednesday of May.
Technology Task Force?
We have not met yet, we will meet soon, now that we have a new person, so.
Climate, Culture, and Morale?
So we had two meetings this week, or subcommittee, subcommittee meetings, I guess. We had a Discipline Task Force meeting on Monday where we talked through some of the X2 enhancements, and then we also had a separate meeting with Judy Dagnes to discuss climate, culture, morale of the nurses as well, and then we have our next full climate, culture, morale committee meeting coming up in June.
Okay, thank you. Budget Subcommittee?
We have our first meeting scheduled for May 31st.
Tentatively, we had two dates, right? I don't know if it's been too far, but yeah.
It's most likely May 31st.
Okay, great, thank you. Marketing Communications?
Same deal, we have our first meeting scheduled for next week.
I always default to Joe. It's the senior member.
They'll get used to that, Joe.
It's respect, isn't it? Can we share a little bit about what we spoke about today? So Joe and I actually did go to speak to Paul Linsky of the Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation. We've also had some conversations with John Fernandez about working with John and the Blackstone Valley Group to look at potential curriculum expansions, as well as outplacement programs, working with some of the local area manufacturers, particularly targeting kids that are not on a college track. More to come on that as we try to, you know, finite the optics about maybe trying to group or segment a population of the student base that we know is not going to be participating in secondary education or college education, try to work with them around interests similar to hotel and hospitality and automotive, and we feel that the manufacturing outplacement program would fit right in the middle of that. As it turned out, it was very good timing, Paul was very receptive about the idea, and there's a lot of legislation actually moving forward to help fund initiatives similar to that. So we've got some follow-up actions, and Joe and I actually have a meeting scheduled with Kevin to start talking about some of these initiatives.
Yeah, so obviously, you've been very involved with that group for some time now, and we wanna just make sure that we continue that relationship with them, because there's definitely an opportunity there for a lot of grant funding, so we wanna continue to have a good, solid relationship with that group.
Yeah, it's a great partnership to have, and I had been on that board, and Paul was very agreeable to having Kevin succeed me on that board, so Milford didn't lose a seat, and that was really important to us. Both that board and the United Way of Tri-County Boards, which are too significant for networking for two different reasons, obviously, but it's, so Milford does have a presence still in both those organizations, despite that I'm outgoing, Kevin will continue to sit in and represent Milford.
Yeah, he was very excited about Kevin coming on board. He was extremely complimentary of you and your tenure with the board and your involvement, your eagerness initially to get things kicked off, so he does send his regards to you as well.
Oh, great, yeah, Paul's a great guy.
Just a quick question, I'm glad to hear all the different groups and organizations. I would also encourage you to reach out to Senator Fatman as well, as his district's a little bit larger. Also, I know with the most recent announcement, the last couple of weeks of Representative Fernandez will be moving on from his seat at the end of this year, so Ryan is still, is intending on continuing to retain his seat, so.
Yeah, sure.
Just continuing on, it's another representative, it's another person in the legislation.
We're looking for as much leverage as possible, so we'll be reaching out to everyone, to the best we can.
Great. Okay, next agenda item, school liaison updates. Does anybody have an opportunity to get into their schools?
I got into my school, no update.
I drove very close to the building.
I did stop by to talk to Lisa, and she said everything was fine, so.
Well, thank you.
I did get my chance to get in. See you guys getting into it.
Where's the pool of money in the middle? I won this week.
Thank you. Future agenda items, and Scott, we will get yours on the next one. Anybody else have a future agenda item?
The only other piece I would just ask, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Chairman, we talked about this briefly as well, and I talked about it, had an opportunity to speak with Kathy, Kevin, as well as Bob a little about this, I would ask that on a future agenda item, that we discuss the, what our process would be around awarding honorary diplomas, as there's a potential for an interest in one for the end of this year, and knowing that graduation is going to quickly come upon us, I would ask that that be on the next meeting as well.
That's a discussion you and I had, too, as well.
Yep.
Hope so. Yeah, absolutely. If you could look into that, please.
Yeah, I'll.
Thank you. Any old business?
Before you do, I learned just tonight that Bill Shaner from...
Milford Daily News.
I was gonna say Metro West Daily News.
You get two choices here.
Yeah, right.
CNN.
This is Bill's last meeting with us, he's taking over in Ashland and Natick? No, Holliston. And you've been one of the longer standing members of Milford Daily News.
Almost two years.
Almost two years, and that's...
Two years in June.
And, you know, I just wanna comment on what I believe to have been a very objective reporting practice, you know, it's been a good term for you, so just wanted to acknowledge.